All rise, pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A little bit out of order, but called order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for September 20th, 2021. Approval of vouchers, everyone's had a chance to review. Is there any questions? If not, is there a motion to accept the vouchers as presented?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Approval of minutes, this is for the August 16th meeting. This was the license plate reader meeting with Officer Burke. Everything looked like it was pretty much in order to me. If anybody have any questions or changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? All is in favor? Aye. First off is the court records audit. We have that here. Or do you have it?
I have it. Would you like me to?
Yeah, if you want to just give kind of a overview of it.
Sure. So every year, the state of New York Unified Court System requires an internal audit be done of the court records and dockets. So trustee Maloney is going to take care of that. And at the next board meeting, there will be a resolution acknowledging that the required examination was conducted.
Alright, yeah. I've asked, sorry, I just had an email come in from NICOM. I've asked trustee Maloney to oversee that. So again, you said the due date was the 15th of October?
Well, they need to hear from, excuse me, they need to hear from us, and then I'll let them know that our resolution will be done at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Once the audit's done.
One second, I'm just trying to pull up the correspondence vouchers. Here we go. Next up was the Climate Smart Community Pledge. Do you have that in front of you?
I do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It was the DEC Office of the Commissioner just welcoming our community.
Yep.
And some additional correspondence that went with that. It's just from Hudson Valley Regional Council of Clean Energy Communities, also welcoming us and offering any support that we need. Yeah, that's it, as far as the Climate Smart.
Alright. Next up, food scrap recycling, which has been a frequent flyer as of late.
So again, just another information email letting us know that Karen Erdel and Eric Brown, who are heading up this initiative, will be presenting at the Town Board Workshop on Wednesday, September 22nd, 7:30 PM at the Town Hall. If anyone would like to be present, participate.
This Wednesday, it says 2 Cedar Street, so I'm assuming that's the building behind the Town Hall?
Yeah, no. It does say 2 Cedar Street, so I'm sure.
Next up is the National Telephone Discount Lifeline Awareness Week, which we were just mentioning because it was correspondence. If anyone needs any more information on the National Telephone Discount Lifeline Awareness Week, we will post it in the office for you to see. Next up, reports. Do you want to kick that off? You could talk, I guess we could talk about park cleanup under here?
Oh, sure, yeah. So, well first, last weekend, we had a really great invasives day, removing knotweed from the trail near Cedar and Mountain Ness. It was like a huge undertaking, but like seriously had wonderful help from trustees and other residents and Boy Scout Troop 437, which did amazing job in a very short amount of time. It was great. And then we have been offered the assistance of the Phillips Town Garden Club to help clean up the village park across the street here. And that is going to take place October 2nd, from 9 to 12, if anybody's interested. We will have members of the club, but they're always looking for some extra folks too, if anybody is interested.
Anything else from the Board? I'll just say, just to follow up with the discussion with Officer in charge Burke at our last August meeting, he has offered to let us visit the Westchester Command Center on October 11th at 4:00 PM. I'm going to plan on going if one other person wants to go, otherwise we'll have a quorum. So, one other trustee, if you're interested in going, or I guess the media or anybody else would like to possibly tag along?
What day is that?
It's Monday, October 11th, and I believe it's down near Terry Town? No? Somewhere down that way. I thought it was near the fire training center.
That's the Parkville Police Station?
But he followed through for us, he's going to let us know if anything changes between now and then.
Do you have any information on the types of people that we'd be able to talk to on that?
I'm guessing the-
If you want to go over some questions about like security, et cetera?
Yeah, I definitely want to talk to their network people and see exactly how everything's secured. And then I'm assuming whoever the commander or officer in charge of the facility would be there too.
Yeah, cool. I'd be happy to go, but if someone else wants to go, I can also, I have to put together some security questions as well.
Okay, perfect. I mean, we could also kind of stagger it in like a 15-minute interval, so we're not all there at once, kind of thing. Other than that, we did the Phillips Town Bike Race this weekend. I almost got hit by one car, so that's an improvement over past years. But it seemed like a fun and a great event for that day. Nobody else? If not, we'll go on to old business, discussion of the STR law and moving it towards another public hearing. Do you want to go through the bill summary?
Sure. So I'll go through a quick summary. It is not too changed from our original, but I think the time that we spent really reviewing it carefully and taking things into consideration was really helpful. And so I'll go through a couple of the quick changes. As you know, we've been discussing it almost every meeting, so. And then process-wise, at today's meeting, we're going to vote on the resolution to introduce this new final draft. If we have things to change after this point, it would have to, if it was a major change, we would have to have another introduction, official introduction, noticing, et cetera. And at this point, we would not expect to vote on anything until October regular meeting at the earliest, because we need to send it to the Putnam County Planning Department as it's a change in our zoning code. So that is the process, and I'll go over the summary. So one, we must apply for SCR permit and have the unit pass inspections, become an SCR. STR may only exist in approved residential units, including one-family, two-family, three-family, and accessory apartments. No vehicles, sheds, trailers, rec rooms, campers, garages, tents, or other temporary structures. One thing that we did change from previous meetings, or from the first draft anyway, is the number of permits. We have created two classes. Class A would be seven, the number of permits under class A would be 7% of residential housing stock. And class B would be to allow up to two one-week-long rentals per year. So that is to try to get folks who have traditionally rented out during West Point graduation, for example, or if you're going away for a week, we want to take up the number of permits from the rest of the group. But they would need to still have an inspection and a permit, but there would not be a limit on those. The number of days owners must reside in Nelsonville per year was unchanged, 185 days half a year. Number of days a unit may be rented out unchanged, 100 total days per year. Must provide at least one off-street parking space. Guests must follow all village codes, including noise and other quality-of-life ordinances. Must provide emergency contact info of owner or designee, who would be, must be within a 30-minute drive in case an issue arises. Maximum occupancy will follow state occupancy and applicable fire and building codes for the number of bedrooms. And more specifically, only, no more than two adults per bedroom. For gatherings, no more than the maximum number of guests issued for the permit will be allowed while operating as an STR. An STR may not be rented for any other purpose, commercial or otherwise, such as concerts or weddings. If you share a driveway that doesn't already have an easement in place, must have permission of a co-user, of co-user property owners. Only one permit allowed for property. Must have resided in the home for one year before it can apply for a permit. And nothing else changed as far as registration. Application must include proof of general liability insurance, not less than $500,000 per occurrence, and identify title owners, et cetera. All that change ends the same. The enforcement is the same. First violation, a fine of $250, second violation, $500, third violation, $750, and a forfeiture of the permit for three years. Every 10 days that a violation continues after an order to remedy shall be an additional offense and additional fines. Fees, all the same, registration of the STR unit, $250, annual renewal of a unit, $150. Did I say that right? $250, then $150. And then first inspection is free, and if you need more than one inspection, a reinspection would be $50. So that is pretty much the summary. We did not have a, we're not going to have a lottery system. The law would allow for the Board to consider increasing the number of permits in a year, but it would not increase it each year. It would still be set at the 7% of total residences. And also, in just reviewing the current number of residential units in the village, it was not the 234 that we originally were talking about, it was actually 215. We have an updated list from the town of Phillips Town. And it does, it still comes out to 15 permits. But again, we would not have a lottery, we would have a little bit of discretion to increase it if necessary. And the language around that is, in making such a determination, the Board shall consider whether additional permits will adversely impact the village's long-term housing stock, the character of the village, whether each applicant has filed an STR permit application, whether the applicants had adjudicated STR permit violations, and whether the applicant would suffer a hardship if the permit is not issued. The issuance of a permit exceeding the annual limitation may not be repeated except by amendment of the article. And then one last thing that we added was a grace period for those folks who currently don't live in the village to come into compliance within six months, or then you would bring your unit, you know, up to a long-term rental.
Alright, that's the latest summary of the bill. Again, the older version is on the website under Current Issues, if you want to do a compare and contrast. So right now, this is just a resolution to introduce the short-term rental law so that we can hold a public hearing to hear from the public on the merits, yes or no. So at this time, I'll call for, is there any motion to introduce?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright. I'm just going to read the resolution before we vote. So September 20th, 2021, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Nelsonville met an open session on the 20th day of September, 2021, and adopted the following resolution, moved by trustee Winward and seconded by trustee Maroni. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees, the Board of the Village of Nelsonville has determined that it will consider a proposed law to regulate short-term rentals of residential property in the village. And whereas trustee Winward has offered the draft-proposed local law annex here too as Exhibit A to the Board, and has introduced same for the Board's consideration, be it resolved, the Board accepts introduction of the proposed local law annex here too as Exhibit A, and orders that a public hearing be scheduled by the village clerk with due public notice being published of said hearing in the official newspaper of the village. Said hearing to be convened at the meeting room of the Village Board located at 258 Main Street, Nelsonville, New York on, and we need to set a date.
Is it October?
Yeah. Let's see. So our next meeting-
It's October 18th.
So you want to do it before our regular meeting, or do you want to do a separate evening?
It's alright.
Alright, so we'll do it for 7 o'clock on the 18th. So convened at the meeting room of the Village Board located at 258 Main Street, Nelsonville, New York on October 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the business report permits, and be it further resolved that the public notice of the said hearing shall provide the time and place of the hearing, an abbreviated summary description of the substance of the proposed short-term rental local law proposal, and said notice shall be published in the official newspaper of the village at least 10 days before the date of the said hearing. And be it further resolved that the clerk shall send a copy of the said proposed STR local law to the Putnam County Planning Office for the referral required by Section 239 of General Municipal Law, with the request that the planning department submit comments about the proposed local law prior to the date of the hearing, and secret documents shall be submitted to the Board before the said hearing as required by the state statute, and the attorney for the village is directed to assist the clerk with preparation of the notice of hearing and its publication and distribution of the secret documents. Board members voted on the resolution by roll call, and the resulting votes to the Board members were as follows. So I will vote yes. Trustee Maloney?
No.
Trustee Maroni?
Yes, yes.
Trustee Winward?
Yes.
And trustee Zianovich is absent. She is having a health issue. But we're working with NICOM and a few other places to see if we can allow her to vote in the future. So total ayes and nays, three yes, one no. And I'll let Melissa you read the last section here, if you have it.
One moment.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, Melissa Harris, the duly-appointed clerk of the Village of Nelsonville, attest that the attached resolution was approved by a majority of affirmative votes of the five-member Board of Trustees on the 20th day of September, 2021.
Alright. So, everyone here that's interested in this, be sure to be there on the 20th and-
18th.
18th. Not a done deal, still room to make some minor adjustments if need be, but we're interested to hear what everyone has to say.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If you have like a three-family home, can you rent out two other apartments, or if you need, you can only rent out one, and you need a permit for each apartment?
You would only be allowed one permit per property. So if you had a three-family apartment building, then only one of those units would be allowed.
I have a question.
Is that right? Let me just double-check with Bill. That would be right, right?
I was curious, because I noticed that-
Just, so Mary Lou is the first comment, Ethan Tim is the second.
Well, not a commented question, because I noticed that Airbnb and I guess, I think VRBO are listed, so I've actually, I had experienced this a long time ago. So you can, having used it, you can put in as a setting, for example, that you're only renting, you're only open for 30-day-plus rentals. So, but it sounds to me like just being, like showing up in there is a violation. And I'm wondering, how do you propose, or how is it proposed that-
You mean just it being listed?
Right.
It'd be a violation?
My point is that those are sites that can be used for longer-term rental listings.
So you necessarily would be a type B permit, but listed alongside type A?
You can use Airbnb to rent the place for three months, which would not be an STR purpose, but coming through that. The reason I ask is my, it's hard to share, but my mother was actually assaulted by a neighbor who was on a long-term lease, right? And so, the notion that long-term leases are demonstrably safer is, at least for me, not clear. And also because my, because the apartment I had next to my house has only been available as a short-term, monthly or sometimes less. I had the personal flexibility to host her while she was, needed a place to stay. And the ability for those, on those sites, there's a certain amount of accountability asked by the renters, whether they're long-term or not. And the notion that, the notion that a governing body would force me to rent to people who maybe I don't have that much of a check on, at least if they've rented previously, et cetera, even if it was long-term. So you can come via Airbnb and have multiple reviews, even if it's long-term, but it seems like you're outlawing the use of those websites?
No.
That they can be used for long-term rentals?
Yeah. So first, I'm sorry to hear about your mom. I hope she's okay. But the law is, defines short-term rental as 30 days or less. And, you know, we're not going to be policing the short-term rental listings for your particular accommodations. The law doesn't address longer-than-30-day rentals.
But it says that it's considered a violation to be listed on those sites.
If you, I see what you're saying. If you are, I think the intent there is, if you are short-term renting, less than 30 days, and you have listed yourself as such on those sites. But if you're listing yourself as more, as longer-term, then that would not be a conflict, right?
Right, it's just, it doesn't actually say that.
I don't want to get into the kind of the weeds tonight, things that we're, this is all going to come up in the public hearing. Put together everything that, into a letter to us beforehand, and we'll address everything point by point.
Do you address letters generally?
We try to, yes, yes.
Because we sent a letter last year of our questions, I asked very specific questions, and we still haven't gotten the answers. And this train is just, the momentum is just going, and there's a revised draft, and another revised draft, and now there's a resolution to adopt a law without any, as far as I can think, accountability to the public input, we had a public hearing, there's been letters being sent, and there's no answer, there's no, there's no evidence of any change pertaining to those concerns from the public, from us, from even other people that have expressed concerns about this law. So how come those questions are not being answered?
I mean, if you want to speak, go ahead, but I can just say that I feel like this has been like the most above-board and out in the open thing. I mean, we've been here until 11 o'clock, 10:30 some nights, discussing this. And a lot of the questions that you submitted in the letter, that I'm actually looking at it right now on our website, have been addressed, you know, you may not have been in the audience at the time, but they were, pretty much everything is discussed.
Have you at least got an answer?
To which?
What would you like to say?
Well, so the question, the first question is, what, why, how did this, so trustee Winward, you state that the intent of this, let it not get lost, um, how do I, sorry?
Can we, can we do this at the very end?
Yes, okay, that's fine.
Just so we, I just, we've got to talk about it, momentum, we've got some momentum to get some things done tonight, that's other than STR, which I kind of want to seize upon, but we're definitely going to get back to it. Real quick.
Yes, I'd just like to ask, the Airbnbs that are in place now, will they automatically receive permits, or do they have to refile?
They would have to apply, and they would have to have a passing inspection.
Because I just, you know, the Airbnb next to me, the owners have never lived there. You know, and they bought it, made an Airbnb, they come up once a week to change the sheets, and that's it.
Yeah.
So they'll have to refile, and they'll have to-
Nobody's ever filed, period.
Conditions about living here a year?
Right. They would have to prove that.
And I would also like to point out that it's a fact that it's been written in many newspapers, Airbnb is bringing in crime. People come there, spend a couple days, look around, taste the joint, come back later.
Let's revisit this at the end of the meeting.
You have to show us where that's written, because I don't think that that's true.
Oh, it's definitely-
Alright, let's, we'll, we'll address it.
Let's not argue on ourselves, if you have individual questions for the Board, let's keep it in mind.
Okay, well, I think that these should be-
Before, let's, anything STR, we'll revisit at the end of the meeting. Let's just get through our new business real quickly. We have one thing, is our Seacor Street bid for the repaving of Seacor Street from Main Street all the way around Spring, Seacor, Crown, out to Main. We had one bid come in, what was the amount? We have all, $57,000 and change.
Yeah, actually, you have it, I don't have it, sorry.
Oh, let's see. I have the invitation. $57,500 from Polhemus Construction, which did the jobs on Division Street and Bank Street last year. We did appropriate $60,000 in this year's budget to do this project. Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns about the bid that was received?
What is this for, Mike?
The repaving of Spring, Seacor, Crown, all the way around. Especially Seacor, because it's spidered and fallen apart all through the intersection of North Pearl Street. Anyone? Nothing? Bill, thank you for doing a lot of the footwork, for getting this into the paper for us. If not, is there a motion to accept the bid of Polhemus Construction, the amount of $57,500?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Dave, thank you for all your work on this, and if you can get in touch with Charlie and hopefully get it done before the plants close this year.
Can I add one quick thing about the Paco's on nearly related? There's three, there's two, as you're going around the bend, from Main Street, and then there's one right in front of Kenny Levine's house. That's pretty big.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, can you just, we'll talk after the meeting too, about some other stuff, he's got to revisit. But yeah, definitely, we'll let, we'll let Mark know.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else, new business, before we move on? I had one quick one I want to mention, and just put it on everyone's radar, that maybe moving forward into the next year, that we review our current legal representation and maybe go out the bid and see what the playing field is. And just get options.
I'd be in favor of that.
Because we've had some difficulty communicating with them lately. Nothing else before I open it to the floor? Anybody? Alright, now we can go. You guys are first.
Can you, do you mind addressing the questions that you think we haven't answered yet? Can you, do you mind addressing the questions that you think we haven't answered yet? First, okay, go ahead, sorry.
So, do I need to state my name?
Yep.
So, the question of how we got, how we got to this, you, you say that recap how we got there, Bill is not piggybacking on Gold Spring, and hopefully that's not the case, because we are not Gold Spring, we also are not Leachin, Irvington, or New Windsor, or any of those other municipalities that have past losses, in my opinion, completely irrelevant to what we're doing. You know, we're six hundred people, if there's a problem, it can be addressed at a block party, or at an immediate, call somebody, because it's not a big city that needs making regulations. Then, so, there is-
So first, first question is, how did we get here?
Yeah, how did we get there?
Okay.
Well, so, a survey, this famous survey, sixty-four percent of anonymous people who filled the survey out are in favor of permanent requirements. Are we going to honor anonymity? I just want to remind everybody that when I tried to make a case to get a bit smaller people, like, for instance, against a cell tower on Seacor Street, I went to Georgia Bowl, and I got signatures from Nelsonville residents with their addresses stating their objections to this plan. This was not some anonymous thing, I don't think, and village boards, an anonymous survey has no place in determining the need for regulations.
Surveys, anonymous surveys are used very frequently in government policy, Sandy Galiff sends one, like, monthly, to gauge-
She doesn't make policy, she, she-
Actually, she does, yeah.
No, she votes on, on things, and she can, she can gather information however she wants. If you put in an anonymous survey out there for anyone to fill out, anyone can fill that out multiple times if they want to. So I don't know how you can just make a case for this, for passing this law based on one, an anonymous survey, and in ten, I look back in ten years, one complaint, one complaint from somebody, not even Mr. Cheddar, I know they have an issue with, and by the way, I just want to say that you may be careful what you wish for, because I've tried to meet you, or actually the homeowner, or your neighbor, your actual neighbor, you're probably better off if you have him, he's not a nice guy.
He's not a friendly guy.
We know that.
Right, so-
And this law won't change that.
And this law won't change anything.
Anyway, I, I just want to stay as focused as we can, so, I mean, just in terms of the survey, I know that, that was that of our previous incarnation of the board. It stemmed from discussions that were happening in the meetings, where it was basically the same people every night that would be here discussing the issue, and this was put out to the larger community to get more of a feel of what everybody thought about it.
But you're using it as, like, the backbone of your decision-
It's, it's not necessarily the backbone, it, it, it did show that people are, it showed to us that there is definitely a concern in the community about it, about the issue.
There's a concern, there's a concern with the people that answered the survey, so they had a, and a reason to answer the survey, there may be another, you know, amount of people that did not bother to, to answer the survey, because they did not know the import of it, they didn't know it would be used, like, it's just-
Right, seeing, they know that only less than 10% of people in this village wanted to fill out the survey, if they were even Village residents, because we don't know, we don't know who filled out the survey, maybe did it twice, or three times, if they really want to get rid of Airbnb.
Four people that went past school.
I don't know how that can be the basis for this law.
I mean, there's, there's nothing to prevent four people in one household from filling it out. They, they, every, each one of them has a right to their own opinion, even if they live under the same roof.
Lord knows, my husband and I do not agree on anything.
Exactly, she's a prime example.
I was at the Gold Spring meeting, there were people from North Highlands there, being very vocal, opposed to Airbnb, they voiced their opinion, and also the survey, when you look at the negative comments on the survey, it's mostly gossip, there's nothing substantiated, no, no actual incidents of-
A lot of, I will say that we asked for folks if they would like to include their email addresses for us to get that.
You're probably not going to do that.
Excuse, and a lot of people did, and I also had full access to all of the information, and I could see that there wasn't any duplicates from, you know, and shy of gathering everybody's IP address, which we could if we wanted to.
Okay.
But the point was, which Mike noted, is that usually we have, like, three people come to a public meeting, and we wanted to hear from a wider audience of folks, to make sure that the concerns that we were hearing over a course of years weren't only from a couple of folks, and it wasn't, it was a very well-respond survey.
You had your anonymous survey, you took your anonymous survey, and then we had a big public hearing. Who came to the public hearing? Only one person, Mr. Cheddar, who was opposing, there was nobody else opposing STRs on that public, in the first public hearing, no, but only Mr. Cheddar, the rest of us were all people that, while they navigate, if a new law comes, how is, you know, how is it going to affect us, so, and we know how it's going to affect us, no trailers, no parties, this is not something that applies to the, the larger population of Nelsonville.
And I might add, that this law, even though it's supposed to be, like, not directed at us, is absolutely directed at us, because we received a letter before the law was even published on the site, directing us that we were breaking a law that did not exist. So I know that it's personal.
And that question has not been answered elsewhere, so what are those complaints?
I know that you have spoken several times with our building inspector, and he's tried to help you guys remedy some situations that you have under property.
There's nothing that needs to be helped, there's, there-
The letter was threatening.
There are, there are, there are open, open building permits, excuse me, I'm Jack, we never are hostile, we always, as you know already, we're always upfront and trying to get the board first. You were not hostile, no.
Well, we're not hostile.
It's not true, you said it was a friendly reminder, just a whole illegal activity. And then would say, walk back. Right, and then, and then what was illegal, what was illegal in this letter was, was food services against some article in the Village Code, well knows what, and what food service that was, there was no date, nothing, no appearance, illegal.
I, Rudy, all I can speak to is that as the board, the governing body of the village, it is our job to oversee that, like, our zoning laws are upheld by every citizen in the village, no matter of where they live, or, you know, who they know, or anything like that.
That's fine.
So, I mean, you have to live by whatever zoning laws I do, and Krista's, and Kathy's-
So what is the zoning law that prevents me from having a, a party at my house? What laws?
Is there, I, I got married here in Gold Spring, we, we had to be quiet by nine.
Quiet, we are quiet by nine, we are quiet by nine, can anybody-
I'm not going to, I'm not the zoning professional of the village, he's sitting in the corner right there, but I'm not going to put him on the spot right now either.
You have to understand, when we get a letter, it's accusing us of certain things, violating certain laws, but first of all, that's a big concern for us, because we, we want to be good neighbors, and I think we are. If we're not good neighbors, and somebody complains, I think, why can't we know what that complaint is? Why is that hidden? Why has that also to be anonymous? Not only the survey is anonymous, but now there's anonymous complaints. I mean, is that, like, what do we think of that? That, that feels hostile to me. These complaints, it's not hostile, no?
They don't exist.
Okay, so what are the complaints?
There are no complaints.
You're trying so hard to make a case.
We're very, very careful with our neighbors, we like our neighbors very much.
And they like us, may I add that, we have never had a problem with them.
Can I ask a zoning question? I don't-
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, because I thought it was pursuant to that. One of my thoughts, sitting here, and I appreciate all the work that's been done, and I've been as, as many meetings as I've been able to come to. One of my thoughts is, this is theoretically a zoning problem, and it seems like there are people sort of within the core of the village who are vocal and have an issue with the neighbor, whereas, it seems to me, because, you know, Rudolph's my neighbor, and so on that, and we're, you know, we're in Hillside Residential, and it's, it's really a flipped situation, because it seems like it's forcing, it's a very different situation, because I have a two-unit house, and it's saying, it's saying to me, I have to have someone there all the time, which has never been my intent. And my question is, is there a possibility to, to have this be zoning specific? For example, there's permitted uses, there's other types of permitted uses that are relevant in some zones, and less relevant in others, and maybe that maybe, um, short-term rental is not compatible when there's close neighbors and you're having a problem, but it may be compatible, and actually preferable, when you're off in the woods, and you, and you actually want to have a lot of say as to who you're sharing your property with. Is that a possibility that could be considered?
It's a discussion, it's, it's come up, yes.
And could I just clarify, did you say that you would have to be on-premise? Our bill does not say that you would have to be on-premise at the time of a rental. Just want to clarify that.
So, it's funny, because you read, I read this, and I think, I want to, that is so different, when I think when you're sharing, if you're kind of in the woods, sharing next to you, I want, I, I would be more strict than this, in terms of who I'm sharing with, but I don't, but, so, the point being, I do, I personally think, not that anyone asked what I think, I think that live-on-site is a great idea, because I agree, I think having a place that's just a quasi-hotel churning people through, I can see how that's, that's not a great thing. So I think the live-on-site makes a lot of sense, maybe speaking from my own experience, but that's all I can speak from, but my only thought is, it seems like the dividing thing here is, maybe it's not compatible in the village, but it's compatible in HR, and I think MR is even bigger zoning, so that's one question. The second is-
Just, one quick question on that, what would your basis of that be? Acreage, or?
Well, I thought it was just H, I think it's HR and Hillside Residential, and Mountain Residential, it could be just, just-
But Bill, in our code, Hillside Residential, is that based on a certain acreage, or is it, it's just a arbitrary line on a map?
But it's sixty thousand lot size, and MR is eighty thousand.
You're in an HR, and you're in an MR.
Yeah.
So, even though they're joining, they're in separate, different zones.
Yeah.
But it's bigger lot, because HR is sixty thousand, and MR is eighty thousand, right?
I don't know.
Yeah.
So, sorry, just to understand better, are you suggesting that only a, only a host that lives on-premise and would be there during a rental should rent?
I, here's a thought I had, which is that live-on-site rent, renter, hosts in HR and MR could be fine, because they're, it's not bugging anyone but them.
What does fine mean, though?
Fine means it's not going to be causing these impacts that people are having of, of neighbors they don't know, et cetera, because it's, there's no one else there, you can't even see the next house. You know, it's not, it's not really impacting anybody, but the, but the person who's there, who, that sort of seemed like maybe that there's, it's a different character of, of, in the same way that there's certain permitted uses, you know, you can open a, a corner store on Main Street, but not in Hillside Residential, so, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not unheard of to have different allowed uses in different zones. Just a thought.
I want to make one comment circling back to what Rudy started with. Truthfully, it's part of the reason for my no vote, like, I do think it's important to distinguish between the survey feedback and the feedback that we're receiving as public comment, and so I think, you know, it's maybe not quite as black and white, you know, the survey does have some value, but I think we do need to weight the public comment that we've received more heavily, because these folks are, they're making the effort to come out, they're, they're signing their names to these, these things publicly, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's apples and oranges. And I, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about this bill, I think a lot of people know where, or I kind of stand on it, that we could have achieved some similar goals with a, just a, a simpler bill. And I think, you know, a lot of what we've heard from the public up until now has, has reflected that, and I, you know, I think we, we should be listening more to these folks and, and looking, you know, looking at more substantive changes that reflect the feedback of the people that are coming out and signing their names to things.
So to that point, this is going to be in the paper this week, I'm assuming, and, you know, we're going to be noticing as much as possible, so, and I'm saying this through the recording, if you have a thought on this, come out on the 18th, correct? To make your voices heard, and, you know, we're, I'm expecting we're going to have a big turnout, so please, if you have another letter, I know it's frustrating, get it to us, so that we can address most of it ahead of time, because we're going to try to keep people within a, like, a five-minute kind of concise argument or discussion, so that we can try to move on and, you know, hear everyone's thoughts on the STR law specifically, but also move on to the regular business of the, the village as well. Is there anything else that we can discuss this evening before we adjourn?
If you check on the rubbish, then we're going to see about talking to the guy that does it now.
Yeah, that's part of what we're going to discuss after the meeting today, is, you know, Mark has a few other things he has to follow up with, and to see if we can get another pickup of some kind of, you know, yard debris or something like that. When is our Royal, the next mass, the bulk pickup? It's in October.
October eighth, eighth, that's right.
Two, two a year, there's one in October.
Let's make sure we notice that a little bit more, so people can have some time to prepare.
I can send a, an email, and we can put it on Facebook, and if you can run it on the last second, yeah.
They, they don't take yard debris, or rubbish, or anything like that, but they take everything else. In terms of the yard debris, we've heard the feedback from everybody about, you know, not allowing dumping of yard waste, and asking if there's any way that we can make some kind of, like, a mulch pit or something back there, where we can dispose of some of that, and a bunch of residents in the area have come forward and said that they'd be willing to kind of run that, so that's something we can look into for the spring. That way, at least you can dump some yard clippings, and not have a pile in your backyard. Anybody else? Judge, you got anything for us?
Nope.
I mean, I, I started, I didn't, you don't, no, no, it's okay, but there was, there were some more questions besides the survey. The main question too, which was on the side of the floor, is, what are the issues that are being addressed in this law? Documented issues, right? Documented cases of nuisance or disturbances or anything? And, and how is this law going to remedy those? Because now, what's his name next to Mr. Cheddar? Never introduced himself, but I'm sure he has a name. He's going to get permitted, and Mr. Cheddar is going to, is going to have Airbnb tenants next to him every weekend.
Are they moving here full-time? Or most of the time?
Well, as far as I know, I can't get a word out of him, I, I consulted him twice.
And, and I don't want to discuss the house next to the Chedda's specifically either, I mean, the-
As an example, what are the issues that need to be addressed? What is, what constitutes the Airbnb crisis in Nelsonville? And how is this, this proposed law going to change anything? Because there are, there are laws on books, there's a noise ordinance, and there are parking, parking, parking laws, there's, there are laws on books, so how, how will they, how will these issues, how will the law have been enforced differently from how it should be enforced now? That's a question I would like to ask. Are we going to deputize neighbors, sorry, so, are we going to be access or status to the community? How is that going to-
So, short-term rentals are here to stay, they were, in our immediate village, they were a lot higher before COVID, but-
How many?
Before COVID, it was about twelve to fourteen, depending how you look at the lines.
Is that documented? Is that, is that, because I've heard higher numbers from Doug and Chedda, who I had a conversation with, her one.
I mean, when we began this, and we looked at it prior to doing the survey, which was February of twenty, before, right, before COVID really-
The survey went out November, November of nineteen.
I looked at what was available, to see, like, what are we looking at? Is this impacting Airbnb and BRBA?
And, but that's something that doesn't really afford it, that was just-
Right, I didn't print everything out, my printer's not that great. So, I just wanted to see what the, you know, what the numbers are that we're talking about, you know?
And then you, you look at all the complaints, I should say, you look at the complaint that was filed two years ago?
No, we've, we've had complaints and continued discussions as part of our hearings, as part of people showing up and being concerned about this. Also, several people have complained anonymously to several members of this board.
Okay, and what are the complaints, kind of, are there-
And I, I don't want to talk about what specific complaints they were, because I don't think- don't think that.
That's really important because otherwise it's just an arbitrary thing that when you became trustee and Doc became trustee, they needed an issue to work on and it's, do we have Airbnb? Yes, we do.
It may, it may, it may seem like that, but this issue, this issue was going on before I even got on the board, which was in 2018 or whatever.
Well, yes, I scrubbed through all the meetings, through all the, all the, from all the meetings.
Former trustee Robertson was, took this up, this issue up as well. I don't know why he didn't continue to pursue it, but it's been an issue in our village for a long time. And it is, it's short-term rentals.
It's been a discussion in Cold Spring since 2012, 2013.
Yeah, aren't going away. And we just want to put some reasonable, reasonable parameters so that, can I please finish?
When we built our house, we built it to share with people. There was no law, when we bought the permanent land and built our house, there was no law that prevented us from sharing our house with other people, however we pleased. We haven't bothered anybody. We've been sharing our house forever since we owned it. Yes, we do make money out of it, but that's a precise point. We share our house with a lot of people.
You're in a residential zone, Rudy.
We enjoy doing it. We're not bothering anyone. And now this law is severely impacting our lifestyle of how we like to enjoy our house, our property. It's our property.
Okay, well, your commercial pursuit.
This is not commercial. These are our guests.
It is.
No, these people are guests. We are there, we entertain there. It's not a front door, it's not open to the public. Nobody can come there and just demand to stay there. We vet our guests. This is another thing. You think you're adding, with these regulations, you're gonna add a quality of life to neighbors, which Airbnb is pretty well-equipped to handle the review system. If, if a tenant next to Ethan's mom would be in Airbnb or I do, I'd be in one star review, right, just trying to hold his mom. So nobody would, nobody else would rent to this, this person. This is, Airbnb is pretty well-managed, it's a $50 billion company. So you look at it and you say, oh, this is, you know, you look at my trailer, I had like hundreds of great reviews, and you look at it and it's like, this has to stop, this is terrible. How can we, or maybe there's a problem with the septic, or maybe there's a problem with the parking, or let's find some problems. We've been doing this peacefully for five, six years, never been a problem. We get, apparently there's complaints, but we still don't know what they are. I haven't gotten an answer to that.
We also have a question that are for next year. What happens to contracts that we were committed to repeal in place of this law? How do we manage that? How do we commit it to that?
And what is the problem? I don't understand. There has to be a problem identified before you do so much work and spend so much money and energy to drag, put a whole new chapter in this law.
You may not agree that there was a problem, but many people have brought this problem to us.
Okay.
Sorry that it would be a change of lifestyle for you, but it is not saying that you can no longer be an SDR host. You can still be an SDR host with one permit on your property.
Oh, I mean, then I'm gonna, we're gonna be criminals. You know, what did you get? If that's what you want. It seems to me, so here, together with the letter that we received, that wasn't Bill's doing. He did not come all of a sudden up and say, I'm gonna send Rudy here. He was put on by someone, I suspect who that was.
That's, but, but, I mean, that's Bill's job. Bill, Bill's, Bill's job is to equitably, he is. No, no, Bill's, Bill's job is to equitably apply the zoning law of the village to everybody in matter of what?
Yeah, that's fine.
So if he got a, if he had received a complaint from anybody, it is his job to act on it.
I'm, I think, am I entitled to see those complaints? Yes or no?
If they were anonymous and they weren't written, then I guess you can't see them.
But then it's just gossip. It's, it's, it's literally just gossip.
Do I have to go to court to see the complaints?
It's just they don't like that we're, you know, doing what we're doing. It's just gossip.
And I, I apologize, I mean, I, I am very torn on the issue and I want to allow everybody to speak, but again, I can't sit here all night and.
Can I ask a quick question? Because it was a question that wasn't addressed.
Yep, go right ahead.
I brought it up last time. So Cold Spring law says that variance enforced by Cold Spring, Village of Cold Spring Police, which is certainly concerning to me. This doesn't address that. So my question is, is who is doing enforcement?
Our zoning code is enforced by our building inspector. And if there were a, I'm sorry.
Who, so who's doing the enforcement? Is the building code building?
It's not, it's not going to be Bill's job to sit there on a computer and monitor Airbnb on a daily basis. If he receives a complaint from somebody that, you know, that this house seems like it's being used, you know, every freaking weekend for the entire year, then that is up to him to act upon it in the way that he sees fit.
My other question was.
I'm sorry, just on the other point of enforcement, if it was a noise ordinance, for instance, then the sheriff does our jurisdiction. He would be the one that would do the house call.
So my other question is, something that seems, regardless of all the other stuff, which we might, might all agree or disagree, one thing I, really doesn't make sense to me, or I don't know where it comes from, is the 100-day thing. And so I'm wondering where that came from, because I tried to address, okay, what does this imply? Let's say Jane Doe applies for a permit, so now she gets her place all ready, now she can rent it for 100 days, and then who's there for the 100, 165 days, or, sorry, 265 days?
Hopefully the owner.
Look, it was a really big house, it fixed our rooms, then what?
Is it, okay, so that's, that's the answer?
I'm sorry, maybe I cut you off too quickly.
So the owner.
Who's there at the other?
But I guess I thought we were talking about places that are occupied by the owner anyway.
They are, yeah? I'm sorry, I'm not kidding.
I think he's asking, like, in his case, if he has an accessory apartment and who's there the rest of the time if he's only allowed to rent it for 100 days?
If you're renting it as an accessory apartment, you have two options. You can do it long-term or you could do it short-term. Under this law, short-term would be 30 days.
But you can do it for 100 days, so you can do it three times.
If you want to do up to 30 days. And that 100 days is to make it reasonable for the people who live next door to SDRs so that they don't feel like they're living next to a commercial establishment. That's every single weekend a year, or that's three months all summer long, or any other way you want to break it up. But that's a pretty reasonable standard. It was also a standard that we saw in other jurisdictions' laws.
So I'm looking at my calendar now. October 18th, we may look to start this meeting earlier, like 6 o'clock, just because I'm anticipating this kind of discussion that's gonna drag on for a long time because there is a lot of issues that I want to allow people to voice their opinions on. But we can discuss that and, you know, if we need to notice it earlier, we can do that. But I, I don't want to, we voted tonight as a board to go ahead to the public hearing with the law that's been presented, so at that public hearing, we will listen to everything. That's all I can say.
Do you have any answer for in what we would do with the same contracts that we got for the future that may be the guest?
A contract would be like a wedding contract, or would it be a short-term rental?
Like for Lex Queen, often people invite their cadets over for a barbecue, and they get barbecue from, you know, the barbecue, Bill's barbecue place up there, Texas Barbecue, and they have it catered by them, and they have more than the 12 people that are housed, legally be able to house, for a barbecue. And somebody maybe will drive by and say, you know, they're having a party. I mean, it's, like, how would you suggest?
Your house is a very large house, so the maximum number of people, I don't know. Bill would have to inspect and determine what that magic number is. And that, under this law, would be the maximum number allowed for a gathering if you were doing it as an SDR. If you were doing it as an SDR rental. The law would currently go into effect January 1st of 22. That's, that's the parameters currently.
So that's it, so there's a barbecue, does, we have to, maybe there's a barbecue permit? There may barbecue permit, like, or variance, like barbecue? I mean, we have, we have five acres, you know, rather big house, like our gatherings, you know, it's very nice house.
I, but, there's a difference between gatherings and, between gatherings of a, you know, family or even a party and ones that you were charging a fee for that is now making it into basically a wedding hall or something like that, which is not within your zoning or anywhere in the village, no matter where.
Right.
That's, that's the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, and then there's no, there is a course of action for that, is we have a zoning board of appeals that you can go before and plead your case and ask them to make a allotment for that.
An allotment for larger gatherings or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the actual request would be, but.
But if it was a, it was a private party, like my niece's wedding, she's planning to have our house on her yard.
It's a private party at your house. And there's no change of money.
Okay, so what, what, how will you know?
It's not a short-term rental.
How will the village know that? How will, you know, whatever police, policing is going to be done, know that when they see my niece getting married on the lawn of our yards, that she is not SDR rental and she's not coming down the doors, bother us? I just don't know how the, or.
I guess you, if, one could look on a short-term rental website and say, hey, the house is booked this weekend on short-term, on Airbnb, but.
You will see that it's blocked.
Well, then, we wouldn't assume that it wasn't a short-term rental.
No, because we block it because you're hosting our niece's wedding, so the dates are blocked.
Right.
So you're gonna, based on the fact that the dates are blocked, assume that it's a rental?
So these are all questions that can be, need to be hashed out in our public hearing. Enforcement, enforcement is something that we have debated for hours and hours and hours.
A lot of dates, if it's private use, the dates are blocked, and there's no way for anyone to see what actually, why the dates are blocked. So enforcement is already kind of checking it.
Well, we, we hope that people are just going to follow the spirit of the law and not actively violate the law.
Well, we're not, we, we don't, we try not, we try not to bother our neighbors. That's, I mean, that's our, that's our goal. We want to be good neighbors. So, so I guess as long as we're good neighbors, everything should be okay.
All right. October 18th, time, it's 7 o'clock right now. We'll, we'll discuss that further and we'll see if there's any change. It'll be well noticed, be there or be square. Any other discussion before we move to adjourn? Any other comments from the audience on anything other than STR?
Thanks for blocking the street for folks on bikes.
You're welcome.
It's one of my favorite events.
We absolutely have a speeding issue. And I don't know, other than putting a roundabout out here, I don't know how you would solve it. Or a big speed bump.
I read about a town in Sweden, did they already tell you this? That it had flipped and they, they had a sign, if you, if you drive through, you already have the reader, if you drive through at the speed limit, you get already entered into a lottery. And it worked.
We should ask Larry Burke about that one.
Can we get an SDR rental?
All right.
Can we leave the Marple sign out for now?
We're not supposed to by DOT.
I almost hit that, that.
Yeah, it's, it's technically not legal, but they got left there by the bike people. So it'll eventually make its way back to the sidewalk, but we're not giving up on putting some kind of lighted sign or something there to draw people's attention because it's, it's crazy. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
I knew you would be first. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.